But I think, but this has to be the accounting along with my budget. Okay, and they'll put it up there that they'll sign off on it and turn it. And just go to the, um, the board for approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Greg, did you give my $20?
Yes, sir.
All right, you can put that down. Yeah, I should give you.
Yeah, we already.
I put that out on the face so probably the people would, you know, update it and add to that.
Yeah.
That's very safe. I don't know why.
It is.
Oh, mercy.
Okay, where's another two?
Oh, I have to pass away. Debbie, what is it? The laptop. They actually gave you the.
Yeah.
And I got the laptop. My laptop. Oh, here, here, it's on number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who is that?
It's the computer.
Oh.
Computer. God is a woman.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Earl.
Okay, here we go.
Is this, how was you?
We're checking.
He's not a commission. It's gonna be better tomorrow. Um, I want to call an meeting to order.
Are we okay? If we can, you know, okay. Uh, sorry to call maybe you want to, Deborah, or Debbie.
Thank you. So let's get ready to kick ya. Um, Mr. Kelly.
Here.
I don't like Deborah. Mr. Freeman.
Here.
And Mr. Campbell.
Here. I'm here, I'm here for the moment.
For the moment.
Flip your mic on.
Thank you. Um, I did send out a budget to everyone and then also I put on your resume. This is just an estimate about who the budget that will be sent over along with my budget to the county showing estimated revenues. And Mr. Kelly. Estimated revenues. If anybody has any questions. I don't know.
Mr. Freeman, here, finish your hat there. Here, here.
We don't need to hear those jokes twice.
No, they worked good the first time. Do we have a paper copy for the agenda? For the real me, for the full meeting? Yeah.
Testing, testing.
Maybe. Did you pause the live or have we been live the whole time? All right. Let's see if we get any feedback. Uh, we don't have the, we don't have the, uh, speaker now. But.
Anything? Hello, hello? No.
There it is.
Yeah.
Does anybody want some copy of the meeting? There's none in your boxes, so I can print it off.
I'm good.
You got it now.
I'm good.
Okay, I request a motion of perjury, like the 2022 document.
Can't do it.
I don't need the motion right now, I need it.
For me. Katie?
Yeah.
I don't, by the way, I'm out.
I'm out. Hi. It's nice to meet you.
I guess you're up here, right?
Um, Tom's gonna be here so much.
Oh, Tom's gonna be here.
Yeah. Hi.
Do we know, Katie, if we're gonna have guests or not?
I didn't know we are.
And I need insurance papers from Prestise. They're half that churned paper.
I turned it in.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, there was a post.
But it's not accurate.
It's not accurate?
Yeah, I turned it in.
You did good.
Came in what day? I brought the kids here and turned it in. It was before we went on, it was before we went camping.
Oh, okay.
Because I figured I better turn it in because in case I, in case they throw me in the lake. They would need the insurance if they did that. So Pam's not that true.
Does anyone have any questions?
Through it, under, sideways.
I still have questions.
I don't know.
Like, I just didn't guess them.
We'll have more sessions.
Yeah, that's what I was, um, like the waste and stuff.
Question.
No, as we start to see the accounts move.
Right.
We can see if they're on target for the, you know, to go ahead and get back on 20 accounts. We generally tend to be to the good. But fire it or waste it. Repetitive type.
Right.
You can, you can discuss. This is just your law project.
There's really no, like, limit on what you can talk about here if you want to.
Well.
It just depends on your appetite for.
No.
There she is.
Well. Bonnie? Bonnie, there's a microphone. Right here.
What's that? Oh, really? But I thi, I guess we. Let's just roll with it and hope that it's good enough for a stream. And if it's not, we try.
We do. That's all we can do.
All right.
We're, we're back on track. Ready to go?
Yep.
It is what it is. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, we had some technical difficulties, so now we're back on track. We're, uh, gonna pick up where we left off. We'd already done the, uh, so we have to do the pledge, right? All right, let's do the pledge. Not yet, let's, we haven't taken the motion yet. Or we haven't recommended the motion. Debbie, lead us in pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So anybody that's here, um, I will tell you, you're gonna have to do that three times tonight because we've got three meetings going on tonight. We've got a budget session, we have a public hearing about a TIF, and then we have our regular board meeting. So with that, Debbie, would you like to take the floor, talk about our budget? And then we'll make a recommendation.
Again, the budget's basically an estimate from our expenditures for 2022. The budget was put out on our side, so it's, I know. If anybody's got any questions about any of the budget numbers, um, I didn't answer. I know, I mean, um. We, I did include, I did get numbers from Amelia, yeah, from Chris Melvin's. I did go back and include those, um, into my budget numbers. But those were just the estimated numbers from Chris from the county too. So, but I did use those numbers since Amelia will be closing soon. I did go and use those numbers anyway.
But to ma, just to make sure that was clear, um, the numbers that you used are from the tax year.
Year.
They're not, not anything other than, than the tax year.
Right, that's, that's it.
Right, okay. You guys have any questions? Nope. Okay, here we go. All right, with that, why don't we make a motion to recommend that we.
Well, the motion will go in if it's been to the.
Correct. That's what I mean, make a motion to put it on the agenda for the regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second.
The motion is second. Do we want to, uh, have any, any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And?
Yes. Okay, we have, uh, we need a motion to, uh, end this public hearing and, um.
I will make the motion.
Make a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, let's, uh, do a roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And?
Yes, all right. So, um, Debbie, we're going into our second public hearing.
So.
It was scheduled to start at 6:30, 6:17.
6:17, okay. Do we have it scheduled to start at 6:30?
I thought we did.
Where's Loretta?
Are we starting the public hearing now?
It is a sign.
Come on, just for old time's sake, get up here.
Got you, you've got to be here, Debbie.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Debbie ends up. And then we can talk. So I guess if we sign a couple of those, then we'll have one right here. Yes.
No, no.
I know. You want to be heard in the live stream, right?
Who was the municipal? Sorry, not necessary, I was just curious. That's good, that's good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Okay. Well, Jim, go forward with our secretary. Time out of the field. So any discussions? Is there any discussion?
Well, does anybody have any questions about the resolution? That we just signed? All right, well, I'll give some background on it, just to clear the air, in case anybody's wondering about what happened. In December, we had to have a process to fill a vacant trustee position that was coming up in January because Bonnie was being a going to take the role as commissioner, and we were going to have an empty seat. So we started that process in, what, late November? And tried to do it the best we could, tried to include Bonnie in it, which I thought was important, and did a quite extensive interview process. We had fourteen, I believe, candidates to start out. We did individual interviews with all the candidates, narrowed it down to a smaller group, and then ultimately a smaller group from there. So our last meeting that we had, we had in the front conference room, and it was put out as a public notice as executive session. We had our meeting. And it went to executive session, discussed the candidates, came out of executive session, and had a discussion about who we would want to put into that trustee role. In hindsight, we should have been more specific on what we basically put out on the notice for the executive session. I was chair at that time, so I will take a full responsibility for not being, not ensuring that that notice was more specific and more reflective of what we were doing at that meeting. So essentially, that's what this resolution is about. I went a little too fast and sped a little bit, and I went thirty-five and a thirty, essentially. It was nothing I feel like was born out of any, in my end or in any of the board's end, attempt to be non-transparent, or to be, to hide anything. I felt like we, I felt like I went out of my way to be transparent, and to have a thorough vetting process for whoever to get in that position, and to do our due diligence, and allow a fair, open process that everybody could apply, and we would pick the best candidate, essentially. But unfortunately, that meeting notice and that technical aspect of it at that meeting was less than desirable. In the, in the, in the eyes of the law, right? Essentially. Which I take full responsibility for as chair at that time. Does anybody else have any comments? Yeah?
My name is Chris, I live in local forward record. And Mr. Kelly, I'm glad that you talked, but it'd be nice to say, I wish once in my life I could hear a government person say, "We screwed up." It wasn't he went too fast. It's government 101, there's no such thing as a meeting, it's just an executive session. Right? You always have to have, start a regular meeting, go into executive session, come out of executive session. If you don't know that, better get some training. You knew you had, it wasn't one meeting, it was three meetings. That's why part of the settlement is about fifteen hundred dollars. Even though you don't have the responsibility for certain things involving the two other meetings. But the point is, that you had meetings, there were, that nobody had access. There was no video conference, it was during COVID, there was no video screen of the meetings. You've gotten this back, or you should know better. That scares me to think that we have elected officials in our county that sit and go into meetings where they know there's no public access, and don't properly go into executive session. And then take action in a meeting when nobody's there. I can't imagine. I don't know if you remember, Alan, but it was maybe, maybe, I might have. Eight months ago, nine months ago now? When I was here for a meeting of people, where people were about back to work, and the lack of correct appearance, and the lack of public meetings on back to work. And you walked by me when I sat back there and said, "Maybe somebody hired a worker down there before work." Do you remember that?
I don't remember that at all.
Okay, that happened.
Maybe it did, maybe it didn't.
So.
You were wearing mine. I don't remember it.
Well, I think I recorded it, so do you like me to produce a recording of saying that? See, this is what I'm talking about. So the arrogance to not just say, "We screwed up, we messed up, we did it wrong, we're not going to ever have that again." Okay, not, I drove thirty, I drove thirty-five to thirty.
I'll let you, I'll let you finish, Chris, I'll let you finish. When you're done, you let me know.
And you just caused your citizens.
Why don't you make your point from this issue? Badgering our trustees, all right? Make your point.
Would somebody like me to?
You can, you can, you can finish, you can finish.
So what you did, ended up now costing, mostly on legal fees, and the money that I'll get, I'll give away. I can, I'll get it. Renee, I got you. Okay? So ended up costing your citizens, what, eleven thousand five hundred dollars? Why don't you also say that there was an original offer to be done with it for five thousand? But instead, you brung it out. And because of the kind of narratives that I've seen politicians make so much, where they always, it's always, "Well, the person was a nuisance, we were just driving thirty-five to thirty, there was no bet, we didn't know, we didn't know you were supposed to have citizens in the meeting." That's why I always make sure that people sign exactly what they did. Because too often governments, like it's happened with the county before me, right after they say we settled something, the press release is almost instant, "We really didn't do anything wrong." Okay? In America, we talk about government being taken away from us, which would be a conservative county. That's not just someplace else. That's right here, that's right everywhere. We're all a microcosm. And when we quit, when we start thinking, "It's only driving thirty-five to thirty, and I just cost the taxpayers eleven thousand five hundred dollars, that's the case, pay that fine." What happens with politicians and people on real life, this is, they're playing with house money, they're playing with insurance money. They're not playing with their own money. How long would it take politicians to fess up? And take responsibility, if they had to pay these things out of their own pockets? But you can yell at me and try to get me removed? But why don't you ask these guys?
Just as a clarification, no one asked you to be removed.
I think he did.
No, he just said, "Shut up," that's all he said.
I'm sorry, I confused, thanks for making the point, you had one of your relatives yelling for him to shut up.
I didn't, I told him to be quiet.
Okay. So I didn't say you did, I said you had one of your relatives, but let me finish my bunch, thanks for bragging it out, okay? So, thanks for bragging it out. So, I think the point is, and I would have loved, and you said we're ready for deliberation, I actually sat there, because I told Mr. Reynolds, I wasn't sure I was going to say anything here tonight. I just would have loved to hear you say, "We messed up. We made a mistake." And then seriously, and or not, I drove thirty-five to thirty. You didn't drive thirty-five to thirty, you just cost me, you cost me eleven thousand five hundred dollars. By the way, I didn't do that. The people that had a meeting where there were no citizens present, no way for them to access it, no way for them to see it, and then voted unofficially business in that meeting, those are the people that did that. You can talk about being transparent, you can talk about being open, you can talk about ethics, but actions speak louder than words. So I hope there's some lessons that are taken from this, to not just talk about being transparent, not just talk about being open, but actually being transparent. Frankly, I don't understand why, if I was in your current positions, if I were having interviews for replacing a trustee, I would have those interviews be open and public. Why are they done in the back room? I don't think it was really, I have no basis, this is just opinion, I don't think it was really a fair and open process. But I can't tell, why can't I tell? Because it was all done in the back room, you're just supposed to be trust that it was going to be fair about it, correct? So I thank you guys, I think that we got this, I'm glad we got this out of the way, we got it done with. But hopefully, there's some lessons more than thirty-five to thirty.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, I will respond a little bit to that. That's fine, go ahead. Go ahead and stand there, but keep in mind, I'm starting, and I gave you, I respected your time at the microphone. The one thing I will disagree with pretty vehemently is that we had that meeting with the anticipation that if anybody came in, they would be let in and be allowed to be part of that meeting. I say that with all sincerity and all honesty. I've gone, I've done everything I can to be transparent as a trustee from the time I was elected, and I think many will attest to that. I, we opened up the Zoom meeting immediately, as soon as we had COVID, we've tried to let anybody like you participate, you can say whatever you'd like at our meeting. And we had a position in that front room to see anybody that was coming in, and I would have ensured that anybody that was here would have been let into that meeting, and been allowed to participate in that meeting. So you talk about the option to settle for five grand and this and that. I'm happy to admit that I broke a technical rule, which I did. I am not going to admit that I would not have let somebody, and somebody not have the ability to get into that meeting, because they did, and that's the truth of the matter. I appreciate your input, but that, that's what's going on here. I mean, if you're, if you're going after transparency, and you're going after a lack of, you know, good intentions from an elected official perspective, I don't feel like this is it, I'll be honest with you, I just don't. You can, you can respond.
So you had put out a notice in writing, you didn't order a resolution, that this building was closed, except for emergency access. You had, the doors, if you know from the lawsuit, the doors had signs on them saying the building was closed. So this notion, think about this government notion, Renee, you might have experienced this some in immunity, this guy's out. Although he had a notice that said you can't come in the building, although the door said you can't come in the building, you know, if somebody would have walked up to the building, I would have let him in the door. That's frankly idiotic to say that.
You would have had to look pretty hard for that, I mean, I don't think anybody would have, they would have come up to the door, we would have seen him, we would have let him in. Honestly, I mean, we're talking common sense here, right, Chris?
Mr. Kelly, you had already told people in writing they couldn't come in the building, and the door to the building said they can't come in the building.
Let's let Chris finish, that's, we're not going to do, we're not going to debate this here, we've already signed the documents, you've had your set. Enough. Anything else?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. You'd like to add? Okay. Good, okay, now we're going to go ahead with the rest of our meeting, if that's all right? So let's start with Department of Celebrations and Updates, let's start off with the Police Department.
We are hosting the afternoon out this year, and last year it was canceled due to COVID. Mark the calendars for Tuesday, August third, six PM at Pierce Township Park. Also, well, abandoned few. Another celebration is potentially held from our police department, completed leadership training at the Police Executive Leadership College. That awarding him, there's a picture. I had a picture of it too, but I didn't make it, so. So there's the agency here, which is, I went through, it's a big program, three weeks, a week and a month, that's three months. So, I've heard. And then, I know this is not a celebration, but it's an update, there was a search warrant served at St. Andrew's Apartments on June sixth, or, I'm sorry, June ninth, in which they found five hundred grams mass, street value of about fifteen thousand dollars to two individuals living there. Who are facing trafficking type four, and she is facing trafficking type two, and he is facing a weapon under his building charge, so I would assume that they would both be put away for some time if all works well. And that's it for the celebrations with updates for the police department.
Chief, you want to leave, you were in the chat after Michelle?
I will, I will be manning the grill again, so come hungry. I usually do.
All right, fire EMS, I know you're being DJ Craig Reich over there. Do you have anything to add, comment?
I don't have anything to say.
Are you kidding me?
The Fourth of July Parade, we could go to the next slide.
All right. Cody, this is your big day.
A big time to shine? That was actually, my celebration was the Fourth of July Parade, I think we had a pretty successful parade. The park looked very good, and I think everybody had fun. Also, I got three updates. We talked to Tate Monroe about the water tap through the Pierce Preserve and Trails. Got a price for that, it's going to be two thousand two hundred and ten dollars for the tap. We received a quote from Creative Scares to redo the landscaping in front of the administration building. I do have a copy of that, and we also talked to, which Randy was a part of this, we talked about just buying the plants and doing it ourselves, which will save us quite a bit of money compared to the, you know, an outside contractor doing. And I have copies of that, if you guys would like to see what it costs up. If we just did the plants, it would cost us seven hundred and nine dollars plus whatever it's going to cost some mulch and rock, so we're probably going to stay under two grand if we did it ourselves versus where Creative Scares was a little over six thousand. And that's with us doing the tear out for Creative.
Cody, I did want to ask, because there's some, I read over the estimate from Creative Scares, is there some kind of like grading or topsoil element to what they proposed? I mean, it seemed like.
I think the only thing that entailed was what they tore up getting in and out to the landscaping, so that sounded like just topsoil seed and straw for coming in and out, doing, getting the work done. But yeah, that, that's the way I read it and understood.
Okay.
And then the last thing was, on the Bradbury Road project, we talked to them today. They're predicting they should finish up within about three weeks. They're set to pour the curb tomorrow, and then the paving should follow that, so. Things are moving along pretty good down there.
It sounds like that means it's going to be done early.
It's what it sounds like, if everything goes smooth.
Amazing. And then I also noticed that we are going to be talking about the repaving bits, but where do we stand on, on repaving?
So we, I think they're supposed to be coming in, I'll double check with John, but I think they said within the next month. Once this gets approved to start the curb work, they'll be able to start after that, just the curb has to go in before the asphalt.
Right. Then they'll get started with, with that, I did know that we've been waiting on Dorada Court, finding out when they can start to do work on Dorada Court, do you have any updates on that yet?
We have not that I know of. But it should all go together, whenever they come in to start, they'll do them all at the same time.
Thank you, Cody, anything else?
That should be it for the updates.
Cody, part of that project, with paving, the lots here, the.
Yes. Yeah, we spent most of the spring working on all the prep work for the paving, replacing anything under the road, culverts and and all the catch basins, any curb that we was, that we were to take care of, we took care of that. So we've had all our prep work done for, probably done a month now, so. Yeah, it's all prepped and ready, it's just getting them here to do it.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah. It'll be a nice, a nice jump off the list, there'll be a lot of paving.
I'm having trouble seeing the lines in the parking lot right now.
They're a little thick. It'll be nice and fresh in a couple of months.
All right, thanks. So Parks, the Parks Committee guys? Who wants to do it?
Doug was out of town, but we thought we had a very successful Fourth of July. Sort of time came in there with the bike parade and all that Bob Howke did, and we were successful in opening the, officially opening the dog park, it could have been open for a while. And our new sign came in Monday, we picked it up, got it installed. So the signpost now actually has the sign on it. And it's pretty impressive, so we stopped by there sometime to look at it, I think we'd be satisfied with the way that it all looks.
You also working on the master plan update?
I think Doug has it all done, it's submitted for your approval this evening, I think that comes in the later resolution.
Yes. And then we have the special meeting at Grow Park on July the twenty-second at six thirty.
Yes, it's been advertised, it's on the website, and we're looking for input from the local residents there as to what they feel needs to be done and what can be done to, you know, protect the park and improve it at the same time.
Right. We're going to hold that as a special meeting so that all three trustees can be there as well, so that's, that's why it's listed as a special meeting, that way everybody can attend, we can bounce ideas off of one another and take some action after that. Michelle, would you want to add anything to that?
No. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah?
Hey, you know, why? Was up there last week, the water tap is not working, do you even know why?
At Grow Park, at Grow Park, I do not know, but I'll make note of it and get it checked out. I was unaware of that.
We, I, we hit it turned off last winter, when the park was closed, and I don't think we ever turned it back on.
Why is some people walking dogs, and it's got the little dog, you know, just like.
I'll call, I'll call phone line.
Okay. It's not something we do, it's to come either. Okay.
Let's get, let's get her turned back on.
Flip a switch.
There you go, let's do that.
I'll do that.
Anything else, Parks?
No.
Planning and zoning activity, Laura Reddick, since Eddie's not here?
Yes, well, I want to say that Eddie's going to be providing you some, some charts at your next meeting. This was one format, but I think it's not as readable as a more cumulative format, this is a month-by-month comparison of activity, but I can, I can tell you that the activity has grown considerably since 2017 when I came and we're, we had a, I think the largest month of May ever recorded this year. So with the addition of all of the permits issued for the Village of Amelia as well, because there were several developments that had been plotted, that several single-family permits came in for as well, it's been a very, very busy time. And then you'll see later on the agenda that we're also proposing the hiring of a, a part-timer to supplement the planning and zoning department to help us manage that, and Laura puts a lot of hours, she, she put this illustration together.
So when Eddie's back, we'll do the more.
Correct. Correct, and then we'll come up with a common format that everyone agrees to, so we can track it maybe quarterly or, or every six months when we have data that shows some trends. Also, we have, we anticipate an enterprise zone application from a new local business that's looking to locate on State Route one twenty-five in the former village, near Glen Mary. I don't have that formal application, but when we receive it, staff will review it, and we'll bring forward a recommendation for the term and percentage of abatement if the trustees are interested in doing that at the time we propose it. Also, there is a public hearing scheduled July the twenty-eighth at six thirty PM to review the text-to-map amendments that were already reviewed by the zoning commission. Shall I continue? I have been meeting periodically with Adele at, I haven't said Pierce, at Batavia Township regarding the former village property, we still have personal property to sort through and, and dispose of if it's not of need to either government. So there are several items in the older administration building, we walked through with Craig Lidle, auctioneer, and it seems to be the most efficient process to have him perhaps do this work for us, where it would all be cataloged and put on the website along with links that he has to other auction sites to do this work for us. They would also meet anyone who wanted to see the items, as well as let the people in and out with secure access to pick up their items, to make sure that they wouldn't interfere with any other items and anytime that they come to look or leave. It would not be wide open, though, it would only be through the auction site, similar to the way that we use gov.deals now. So that is a proposal that was taken to the Batavia Township trustees, and I was asked to bring it forward to see if I had your agreement. What we'll do is we'll get an agreement from Craig Lidle, then I'll bring that forward, and we'll also need to pass a resolution that declares the items unnecessary for, for public use. So there'll be a few more steps, but unless you object to that approach, that's what we thought we would continue to, to work on.
I don't object to the, to that approach, my only concern is that I do hear from people in the community, can you guys hear me all right? Because I can see you're squinting, so.
Hey guys, your, your mic isn't working.
I know, but you were sleeping.
Move that microphone up.
I can't hear you, anyway. I mean, some of, one of the things I hear a lot from the community over in Amelia is that some of the folks that live in Amelia may want to have access to some of these, these items, and I know that they'll have the access to go, you know, look at the items, but I mean, as far as is this going to be completely internet-driven, just like the, the other?
For security reasons and staffing reasons, that's the most practical approach, and that is the way we've been doing our own auctions. So this would be consistent with that, otherwise we would have to find a way to make sure that we secured all the items, because we still have public records there we're responsible for. We're still working to manage. There, oh, the, the second part of the recommendation is that for any items that are appropriate for public benefit, that other townships have an opportunity first to review items, to see if there are abuse to other townships.
Now, in the past, when we've done our, our government auctions, we post the, the link to govdeals on our Facebook page.
And website, we have to do a legal notice in the newspaper, there's a procedure to dispose of public property that we have to follow.
I'd like to make sure that the, the community is aware so that they can have access to it, and it's, it's easy.
It will be.
Who would like to make a bid on that, that are from the community, and there's, there's probably people in Pierce that would, you know.
Yeah, there'll be a link.
Other part of Pierce that would like to bid too, but they don't always know that those things are available to, to, to bid on. I, I talked to one person that, I guess when there was a car, or a vehicle, and she wanted to see how to bid on it, but she didn't know how to get that, get that done, and that would have been at least one more bid on the gov, the govdeals that could have been included in some of our previous auctions, I just would like to be. I just would like to be able to make sure that people are aware and it's made it very, very easy and very apparent.
I'll need to make sure it's more prominent on our webpage, but also posted then on, on Facebook.
It's right there front and center, right?
I, I think usually it is, I know.
I just looked at it today.
Recent one with the fire service items, it was there.
I just want to make sure that everybody's able to participate, that, that wants to or has an interest in participating, so. Finding a way to make sure that's out there.
And also, as we continue to discuss it, like I said, the next step is we're going to have to bring legislation forward to the next meeting. And Adele and I will also be working on a list of the items we feel that the other local governments may be interested in. And that's going to be file cabinets and desks that most of us already have and nothing there is better than what we already have. Well, it really depends on how quickly Adele and I can sort through things and isolate. I mean, certain items, we have to make sure that there's nothing inside the cupboards, basically. There are no less than three refrigerators in the administration building and one freezer still full of hot dogs. So I just want you to get a picture of what we have to do. So between our service departments bringing us a dumpster and, and Adele and I and anyone else we can rope in to help us, there, there are things we have to do to prepare.
So, well, once we prepare, catalog all the items?
The auctioneer can turn it around in two weeks himself, but it'll take us a good month or so just to get ready. So hopefully by our August meeting, we'll, we'll have to see if we have at least the legislation ready because we have to do the legal notice for, I'm not sure if it's 30 days, something like that, so.
Value matters too, you should give a ballpark value, it's over something certain statute applies under that.
Correct, correct, and none of these items are anticipated to have anything over that $1,000 value that you, that you had already agreed that we would be able to sort out between us if it was an item that we were keeping and, and the items that are still there, I don't believe there's anything much that's over that value.
Can you say that again?
What did you say?
We don't believe there'll be any items that are, uh, single items that are necessarily over $1,000 value that would be sold.
In that house?
I'm not certain about, perhaps there's a big antique cabinet, I mean, there might be an item like that, I can't say. But as far as the public, public items that either township may retain, those are valued less than a thousand. But the auctioneer has experience with antiques and such.
Can I, can we discuss that a little further? I mean, I can wait if you want me to wait, but I don't want to celebrate. So where is this, this money, is they going to be decided 6530 from this auction?
That's the law, yeah.
Okay, because my head's going to explode, everything's sad, because I don't understand why, first of all, it goes back to not categorizing everything from the beginning, from November 25th, not 2019. It all should have been categorized then. And here we are in almost August of 2022, or 21, and nobody still knows where stuff is in that house. I, my problem is, is I don't understand, you know, to Adele's point, why we aren't giving those of us who paid for all that stuff in the house, an opportunity to get the stuff in the house.
We know exactly what's in the house, but are you proposing that the public just be able to, you know, do a, a bid and buy? The government process doesn't allow that kind of disposal of public assets, it's, it's the whole public. It's, it's all of Pierce Township's assets at this stage and Batavia Township's.
Okay, then I prefer you all donate it to somebody that can use the money.
Have we gotten an assessment of, of an, any kind of ballpark total value, what we're looking at?
The auctioneer will do that, he will give us a, a list of all of the items and a minimum auction value for every single item before the auction's even initiated.
After the train leaves the station, i.e. after he's already ready to do the auction, or?
Well, if we don't proceed with the, he gives a proceed, a percentage of the auction proceeds. If we didn't proceed and he did that much work for us and then we didn't proceed, then we would owe him some money for doing that work.
Any kind of an idea of this roughly and what do you think is there, the value wise?
I mean, it's, I can tell you what things are bought for, I mean, mostly off the top of my head. Which I know depreciation and, and stuff like that, I mean, it, it just for the chandeliers in the, in the room were over closer five grand. Okay, so that's just chandeliers. And Mr. Hart had to have the Oval Office, so his desk was $2,700. His bookcase was $2,500. Not to mention the other, the dining room set that was purchased for $2,800. I mean, you're talking almost 10 grand right there. And, and I realize that it's not any more than thing to, probably a lot of you sitting here, but that's my money sitting up there. That's my tax money sitting up there and then we're going to sell it and it just, it's, just irritates me. And in the fact that nobody cares that stuff has gone missing and stuff hasn't been put back, that's an issue for me too, but I think that's another game to play with.
We, we looked at it quite a bit, Renee, when we went up through everything together that day and I mean, you just can't put the genie back in the bottle at this point, I mean, I agree a thousand percent with you, there should have been an inventory done because on that day, everybody knows now that the village is no more, it's not no more at that particular moment, but it's going to be at some point. And so things can walk off or things could go missing or there was a good month or more there of kind of limbo where, and I, I'm not saying they did, I'm just saying there was no monitoring of it, there was no initial inventory, so. That's the kind of stuff for looking for future dissolves or a framework in which you kind of proceed after the vote would be helpful, but for us at this point, I don't know.
The caveat that I would add to the, the price of, of all those things, I mean, I, I don't rule out that they paid more than they should have for any number of those items. And so it would be interesting to see what the appraisal is of those items and have that listed along with it. But Loretta, remember I, I did suggest, and this is, it was serious but not serious, but serious, the idea, I, I continually hear from folks from Amelia, are we going to have a, a yard sale day? And so I was wondering, can you tie those two together, have a Pierce Township wide yard sale event and then allow people to go through the building at the same time? And at least see what they, what's, what's available. I, I know you told me why we couldn't, why we couldn't just put everything out on tables and let people buy it. I, I understand why you can't do that because it's against, apparently against the law. I don't want to do that.
I mean, talk about things walking off, that would be a perfect opportunity.
But it does give an opportunity for the community, it's a community event, it's something that, that everybody can, can get involved with, it's something that's, that's been a traditional thing that's happened in, in, in Amelia, but it also gives an opportunity for people who are interested. Do you or do you not like antiques? Would you not like to go in there? Did I'm wrong about that?
Specifically before they auction.
Correct.
There's a preview.
Right.
Which, you know, folks can walk through and look at things and all this kind of thing, before they auction. So there's fair, and that can last any length of time, depends on the auctioneer, several days or something like that. So, I mean, there would be an opportunity to see prior to the auction.
Is that, is, there would be, is that how the?
That could be done, there'll be an additional fee for that, I can find out.
But it allows the folks that, that, you know, that are interested to go in, take a look. We could use that as also another piece to market the fact that here's how you go to the, to the, to the website, here's how the website functions. Here's how you can, Donna, yes?
Can you do that? I would make sure that Chief Bachman has people stationed all over that house and every room. I, I'm not going, I'd be inside the whole building, but, um.
Chief says.
It would be very staff intensive, I mean, even to prepare for the public to come into the building, there is a whole lot of work that needs to be done. So perhaps we could walk through it and, and imagine how we could manage it.
But.
I think you should walk through both buildings.
Yeah, or, or just station a couple of people at the doors where they go in and out, and you just make sure like a store, nobody's leaving with stuff.
I'm taking a little bit of offense to the fact that everybody thinks that, you know, residents of Amelia are going to go in there and loot the place, that's not.
I don't know.
No, not, that's not at all what I'm saying, but you had said, no, you had said things walked off, you said things walked off. You had said, I understand what you're saying, but he.
Loretta? Yeah, that's not the intent.
That's what I'm trying to say, it was not what I intended at all. I, I'm sorry if I offended you, I didn't mean that to you or any public. That's my responsibility to respond to that, but I am sorry for that.
But we're not going to get into an argument about this because this is something that we can make positive. And I don't think that we needed to do anything negative. Donna, I got to put a hold on you because Tim had his hand up first. Oh, Donna, you don't, yeah. Are you going to do a solo on that? I'd like to add a few songs, like from my playlist, yeah.
Uh, my question is, you know, we, we've got a set of rules we have to follow by on how we dispose of the product. And, but where was the procedure on November 25th of 19, when there had to be some way to put this stuff in some form of inventory? You can't tell me that, oh, for almost two years, and with all the talent and experience we have sitting up here. And we dropped the ball there.
We did drop.
I, I believe at some point Todd still had keys to the building. He was taking stuff out of there right after, we, we stopped. But we're, you're telling me what we can and cannot do, but when the two townships, I have to put in words, we're tired.
Well, let me answer that, because I can't answer that. So after, on those dates that you, that you listed, the state was in control. The state had no rules, the, the rules were always in place because those, those were the rules we lived by. So if Chief has to sell a car or Cody has to sell a loader or whatever, we are required to live by those, by those rules, okay? So on whatever date you, you listed, those rules applied to us, but the state was in control, as you recall. They were running the whole thing. And the truth was, they had a totally open back door. They weren't down here, they weren't doing anything, they didn't secure it, they didn't call Chief Bachman, they didn't call us. I can tell you that Loretta brought all those things up to the state. She had those conversations with the state and it's like, oh, okay, you remember Mr. Thompson?
Yeah.
You've dealt with Mr. Thompson?
I, I approached him, you know what his, uh, what his answer was? Counselor George.
But then he should have told us, and then he changed the rules.
Yeah.
And March of, of that, of the following year, they changed the rules, now we're in charge.
Well, we locked it up.
And then, and then add to it, and I'm going to relive this also, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm going to relive it with you. Add to all of that, they put the council back in charge. The hen, it's a fox guarding the hen house, because now they handed the keys back to the people that were loading up the wagons and taking the stuff out. So we're with you, we didn't drop the ball.
Right.
We just, you know, we're being banged around, and you don't know this, we're being banged around by the state, by the county, by every, all of those forces. And we're trying to get this done and it was the only first time we've all, we've gone through it, first time you've gone through it. State's gone through it many, many times, but they left us with nothing and we still have enough.
In December, January, February, all up until March, we tried to get our arms around it, we tried to speed it along, we tried to do what was best for the citizens, tried to come up with a plan to pay the debt and do it quickly, tried to get rid of the income tax and do it quickly. I mean, right when COVID hit, we really tried to speed that along, voiced our opposition to Mayor Hart continuing to, or Todd Hart continuing to get paid.
How many resolutions, declarations did we pass?
And we were pushed back hard in March by the state auditor. That, what, we were overstepping, that that wasn't our role, that the old council had to be seated. I mean, it was a nightmare for, and the amount of effort we put into that.
We even went back to the state with, with an, an alternative, which said, and Tom can back us up, that said, we'll take the council members that weren't on the ballot in 19, because remember they said they had to use the look back. It meant that the council members who lost got to stay. Our counter was, take the ones that won and the ones who weren't on the ballot, and merge those into one council and let's move forward. And they, I mean, we got a stiff on. I mean, I still, I still, my, my neck still hurts.
Yeah, the carryover process was killed.
It was ridiculous.
But my, I'm sorry. But my, any good business, you're a business, everything is probably inventoried, am I correct? You have an inventory. And you know, if you've got, you know, five buckets of this and 10 of this, 10 of that, you know all the lumber right there.
You're giving me a lot of credit. It's a small business. I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying.
But the thing is, we've been there back in January when we done Walker. Can we do it inventory, can we get it inventory, can we figure this out? And then let's see how we can work it out with a million folks. You know, and there's a lot of folks, not me included, there's some nice items up there. But the, the folks who lived there for many, many years, was born there, you know, y'all like your Bob Groves, that may have interest in some of this stuff. Instead of it just being put out for auction and Joe Loeb from Longstown, you know, buys it. That's not the answer.
Well, we may, that may be the legal answer that we have to follow.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that he gets every opportunity to see that and have the opportunity to bid on it electronically. Because that's going to be the most efficient way to get it done. And so that's what I'm concerned about, that's what I brought up just a minute ago. And that's what I want, that, that's the direction I'd like to see it go in, so at least residents, and that's writ large, anyone in Pierce Township can, can go in there, they have a couple of days of preview, they get to look at it perhaps before it hits the, hits the auction site and then allow people to actually put their bids in. And that's what I would like to see happen.
And inquire about the process a little too and how it's done.
Sure. And the other thing I'd like to get from the trustees, all proceeds, all monies, including, you know, I talked for, that the windmill penalty is earmarked in the, the former Amelia Village unification.
I think we've already committed to it.
Where it's, where it's earmarked into one fund.
Well, legally it has to go into the general fund, so that's where it has to, well, that's, that's all, I'm, it, it may be a problem, but that's the law. And that's the way this works. So when it, when it happens, and Debbie can talk to this more efficiently than I can, but the law states it goes into the general fund. Now, a few months ago, you'll recall, and I got in trouble for this, I was concerned because the state auditor has been talking about, remember when we started to, to, to relieve the debt? So the state auditor at that time said, it's okay to take all of those siloed accounts, the fire, the, you know, all those, all those accounts, mush them into one, pay off the debts. So then at the end, the auditor started making noise that he wanted to take all of that and put it back into the silos when it came out the other side to the townships. And so that's what I was objecting to, because it's like, mind your own business, okay? We got through all of this, you thought it was okay to merge all that for, for debt reduction. Now you want to put it back where it belongs so that townships, you know. And when you look at that and you look at the numbers as they come in, one of the biggest things that we're going to have to face is that over this past, what, five years or so, there's been little or no investments in, in Amelia. And that predates Amelia going away, I mean, we've talked about this before. There was a road in, in Amelia that our concern wants is that it wouldn't survive winter snowplow. So we put $43,000 into that to get that thing up to, up to safety standards to get through the winter. And that's largely because there was no investment, they weren't fixing the roads. They weren't doing, they weren't fixing the parks. So we're going to have to have a pot of money to go in and do those things to improve, actually to, to invest in the infrastructure that's been ignored for five years. You see it.
Now, for fast experience, when you, when you take that money and put it in the general fund? Now, for fast experience, when you when you take that money and put it in the general fund. It's not, it's not any category. It's not where it's been spent on certain things. It's like it's like an open check in a sense. And not criticizing, but I'm just saying, I've seen it happen before.
We have, we have elements of all within the general fund that are categorized into certain earmarked into certain categories. Like we have park money and Park Fest money. But that's not to say that us three or we don't get elected and somebody else comes in and they just change it and spend on anything else, right? There's nothing really that keeps, really, you could vote on something and move that money out and and do something else with it, right? I mean, it's still within the general fund pot, even though it has a line item.
To reappropriate it?
Correct.
I can reappropriate it.
I'm just saying, Tim has a point. It could be done. But that's kind of like the framework in which we have to operate. And the only issue, I wouldn't even say issue. The only little caveat I have is the beautification part. Because like we, you know, I I know our services, police and fire and everything have had had to put on additional people. Have had to do a lot of additional work now that the village is is part of our community. And so I think that should be considered as well. And and you could consider some of that being spent in the village because we have extra officers now. We have more, you know, fire resources and road resources. And so I think all that needs to also be.
Focus on the beautification.
Yeah, that that that's the only little caveat I have.
We just spent sixty thousand dollars up with the COVID funds to do a study up there in Amelia for business development.
And we intend to leverage that too.
And we'll invest those those funds. And then we also have ARP funds that are still coming. And we're going to focus on trying to trying to invest those funds in the business district, which consists of Amelia. So those funds, there's going to be investment made in Amelia. But there's no point in discussing it at this point because we don't even know when it's coming. I I don't feel like talking about budget items when we're not even, I don't even know that it's coming. So we're focused on the on the resources that we have. And if you look at at the list of of our our road repairs this year, there's a number of them that are going to be in Amelia. So we're already starting to make those investments inside of Amelia.
Scarcity down.
It's still, Hamlet's still Hamlet and, you know.
I really agree with the conversation and not, you may be disappointed because it's it's got a different direction.
Well, we're not going to.
We 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 live in Amelia. We experienced that.
Right. Well, I've always said, I've always said, and I hope you guys don't get offended by this when I say this. I've always said that it's a little bit like getting out of a bad relationship and meeting a nice guy.
Yeah.
You can't believe that you're not going to get hurt.
Right.
And the truth is, is that we will have the discussion about those about those issues. But I just don't see a point in having a debate and spend money that we don't even know. We don't, why why have this grand discussion? When we don't know that. Now, we will be talking about the park stuff on the twenty second. And we are having that directly in Borough Park. So that's going to be in in Amelia with the notion that that's where we're going to start to to focus some resources. But we know that we're getting American Recovery Funds. And American Recovery Program Funds can be used for park repairs and improvements.
Sure.
So that's a direct line item. That makes sense. We can start to move forward with that as quickly as we can. But we do have one, again, there's a caveat to that. And that is, we have to find out whether the state is going to require us to pay back Senate Bill Four funds into our tips. If that happens, then we're delayed by six months because we're left to wait for the second tranche of funds to come in from ARP. But that's what we're focusing on. So we're already making the commitment that we're investing in in the Amelia portion of Pierce Township. Does that work?
Yeah.
And we're also investing in the rest of Pierce Township.
Right.
I mean, we're doing the largest road budget that we've ever done in Pierce Township. We're going to be, what, seven hundred thousand dollars in road repairs. Not to mention Bradbury that's that's being done right now, which is over a half million. That's six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars right now. We're going to be doing about somewhere around one point two, one point three million in just road repairs. And that includes, we're going to do some work on Jenny Lynn. We're going to do work on the hole. We're doing work on um, Homingberg, isn't it? It's on our on one of our lists.
I believe so.
And it's it's posted, it'll be posted on, if it's not already, the list of roads will be posted on 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 our website. So we've made a commitment. We're going to do it.
Well, we're chicken.
Nothing. Thanks, Tim.
Okay. Yeah. And we're going.
Yeah.
And and you know, you don't know me from Adam Smith, but you know, I I do want you to know that I understand why you're so sensitive because you fuck with it, Mark. You know, and I understand that. If I sat on the other side of this, you know, bench, I you know, I I feel for you. I really do so. I I don't want you to think that we're against or in some way opposed to improving everything over in the former village of Amelia. I grew up in a neighborhood like that. And, you know, I I feel, I know where you are and I I know what you want, what you need and what the folks need, you know. And quite frankly, you know, we have our our commitment and concept.
Sure.
To making things better. This is not a you over there, Pierce Township division. This is one community. You are we, and we are you. And I want you to know that. I'm not just, I'm not lip service. I'm not saying that because I'm up for election. I mean, this is what it is. And it's what I feel, what I believe. It's what I don't want. If I was sitting over there, my responsibility to you, I represent you as well, and you may and everyone else over in the former village. So, you know, my interest is your interest. And I think I can speak for the rest of the board in saying that to you in very honest and and open terms, and I'm not being likened by this word of trustees, the former village will not be.
Right. Because we we're making us taking a lead role in the Amelia community, the former Amelia community. And the thing is, we've never given that up because we're still being reached out to. And we're still going to defend until, oh, we, you know, everything should shut down. And hopefully, this month, they'll get the lights coming back. They got to do it live. They got to do it in person.
We are on the same side.
It's hilarious.
I was surprised they didn't hurry it up and get it done. I mean.
Hurry up offense. Let's go. I thought they were. Thanks, Tim.
I got to get I got to get moving because once again, I'm dragging on time, so.
I just had a question. When you mentioned about the road, forty three thousand, what road was that?
What was the name of that road?
The one that we paved, uh, yeah.
If John were here, he'd know. Oh, we've got this, you know.
Was it near Huntsman?
No, in the village of Mid, one of the paved.
Near Huntsman?
Yeah, I think it was near.
It's it's somewhere off of that neighborhood.
The names, you know, I can see them, but I don't remember the names that well.
Yeah, how would you get that? If we could solve right now, how would you do?
Right. You can verify and let them know, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Sure, I can find out.
Okay.
I do have another item.
Don't screw this one up, Loretta.
I'm not trying to. We have a proposal from American Tower to revise our current cell tower lease for the Jenny Lynn Tower site. They come to us from time to time. And of course, a whole bunch of other freelancers come to us from time to time, offering to buy out the lease, which is a terrible idea, and I would never do that in government. Because you you keep that, you want to keep control of that site one way or another for the life of the owning the land. So all they've proposed is to freeze our current rent for a one-time payment of five thousand dollars. And extend their lease terms and give them a first right of refusal to match any offer received from a third-party buyout company if we decide to sell the lease. Because we are not going to accept they offered us a little over two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to buy out the whole lease. The lease runs currently through twenty thirty nine, and it escalates three percent per year. So unless we're interested in this offer.
Are these the people that said that, like, if we didn't agree, they were going to take the tower down or something? Wasn't that like a couple of years ago?
By the first, but but that person's moved on. And this is another person in the same firm that's come back two years later. So the offer that we had from them two years ago was to pay a lower lease payment than we were receiving and freezing it for the life of the lease. So un- until they threaten to take the tower down or remove their equipment, I would say I wouldn't recommend that we negotiate if we don't have to. And last time, we sat for three for two, three years, and we said, no, we're not interested. And we kept collecting payments, and it's escalated to a higher monthly amount. It was nineteen hundred and something. It's over two thousand a month that we receive now.
Well, in hindsight, that was a good negotiating decision, wasn't it?
Mm hmm.
Who came up with that?
So if you want me to proceed that way, I will tell them that we considered it and we're not interested.
No deal.
Loretta, I did want to ask you. The agenda items says reducing payments, but when I took.
Well, it reduced the payments over the life of the the remaining years.
But their proposal is to pay the same rent, right?
Well, this month, this year's rent would not change, but future years would be less because it would be frozen at this year's amount rather than escalating three percent per year. That's why saying it's it would be reducing the amount we would receive over time. I recommend we do nothing.
Do we need a motion on this?
It wouldn't. It wouldn't hurt that we reject their their offer.
I will make the motion and do nothing.
To reject their offer.
To reject the offer and do nothing.
And you guys thought they were crazy about how government works. I'm telling you, a motion to tell you to do nothing. Would you say, I mean, do we have a second for that motion to do nothing? All right, we have a motion and a second to do nothing. Do we want to discuss our doing of nothing? Okay, apparently, we don't even want to do that.
Not to interrupt, it was Woodside Park. I wanted to answer your question. We paved Woodside Park.
You know what he did?
Yep.
He did Google Maps, and he sat over there the whole time.
He mapped it. And I was like, that's it right there. So Woodside Park.
Perfect comedic timing.
All right, so you got that answered. So we did do something. Let's do the roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell and Mr. Freeman.
Yes. We just passed the motion.
And I have one more.
Are you kidding me?
No, just to remind all of you on the record.
Stop that. It's like, this is where you drop the mic and go.
I'm being like Debbie. One more thing. We have, just to remind everyone, we're honoring Lori Wilson at the Salute to Leaders this year. It's Wednesday, July the twenty first at the Oasis Conference Center. Starts at five thirty P M. And we bought a table. I sent all of you who proposed for the table. A reminder to let me know for certain if you will be in attendance. And we're expecting Mr. Freeman to grant the honor. So.
Okay, don't tell her.
That's a reminder.
Make her speak. She's definitely afraid of speaking in public. So what can I do but make her do it, right? Her mom told me to.
I think the chamber is going to write you a script. So we'll see.
I have to be on script.
It is July the twenty first, which is a Wednesday.
Six o'clock next week.
Five thirty at start, you know, socializing at five thirty at the Oasis.
We have one table?
Yes, it seats eight.
Do you remember the year I sang?
I don't know. I don't know. I think I forgot it on purpose.
All right, so anything else, Loretta?
Not until we get to motions.
Okay, so then let's go on into new business. We're taking care of old business. Let's go into new business. Debbie, you're you're on.
I request a motion for approval on the payment of payroll for the month of June twenty twenty one in the amount of four hundred and thirty three thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty nine cents.
I do have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell and Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of bills for the month of June twenty twenty one in the amount of one hundred and sixty two thousand, one forty three eighty five.
Done, move.
Second.
Motion and second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
I request a motion to approve the twenty twenty two tax budget as presented at the budget here.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell and Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Are you?
Let me look. No, I don't have any.
Oh, my gosh.
So that's a first. You passed that honor over to Loretta today.
Yeah, she took it.
Chief Wright, D J Wright, what you got over there?
Request a motion authorizing the payment of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars versus the chief there on the two thousand two four two thousand. Lead Plan on Community Leadership Program to clarify what she requires.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on it? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Next.
Request a motion to rescind conditional employment offer of Corey Murray as a full-time firefighter and chief.
So moved.
Second. Second, what's the background on that?
I mean, we've not successfully completed the three requirement requirements that were set for the original motion.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell and Mr. Freeman.
Yes, Chief Wright.
Request a motion to approve the appointment of Zachary Tapper as a full-time firefighter and chief. Establish rate within the successful completion of all associated three-point requirements in a one-year probationary period. They only would cost a whole associated three-point requirement. Is that a township?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell and Mr. Freeman.
Yes. You're still up, Chief.
Motion to approve the appointment of Jacob Tool as a full-time firefighter and chief. Establish rate, planning successful completion of all associated three-point requirements in a one-year probationary period. They would cost a whole associated three-point requirement. Is that a township?
I'll make the motion.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Well, you're not John, but go ahead, Karen.
We'll continue.
All right, I request a motion to approve the buyback of Lot Six, grades one and nine, in section two B lots in Pierce Township Cemetery in the amount of five hundred and seventy three dollars and thirty two cents from Mr. James Beard and Mr. Beard giving up all rights to said lot.
Again, motion.
Second.
With motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
I took a quick look, unless there's any, I took a quick look at the documents provided, and it looks like the gentleman who wants to do this is the named executor for the will of the last person to die. And he indicates that that family will not be able to use any responsibility. So it makes sense.
Because my concern was is that he did plan on dying.
He's planning on dying, but he's planning on.
Not using on his baby.
He is, and he and his spouse are planning on dying, but they're planning on paying them cremated. Kind of plan.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second, we have a motion and a second. We've already had gruesome discussion. Do we have any more? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. John, Sandy, and Cody, please go again.
I request a motion to accept the quote of seven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. That's three thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars a day, a minimum of two days for the cleaning and CCTV internal video of the twelve-inch diameter through forty-eight-inch storm sewer lines on Holly Ridge Drive from Insight Pipe Contracting, LLC.
Why don't you walk us through what that what that.
So this is going to be, we're going to use this, we're wanting to line these pipes under Holly Ridge. And this is, I brought an example showing to.
I love it, man.
This is what the final product would be. But before that they can do this and give us a quote on doing this, they have to to clean the pipes. And they have a machine that they run through. And they all have to be augured up to inspect the damage and what it's going to take to put this line in. So this quote is only for the cleaning of the pipes to give us the quote for the line.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion or do you have any other audio visual displays?
I have some packets if you'd like to look over.
I love it, Cody. Be sure.
Yeah, what, these pipes are, they're super deep in these big ravines. Yeah, what, these pipes are, they're super deep in these big ravines, pretty large diameter pipes. And plus Holly Ridge is a dead end drive. And so, if we were to open them up and try to change them, it's kinda, it's a bigger job than what our equipment can handle to do. And plus, you're kinda, besides road plates, you could entrap somebody, you know, because you always got the chance of a cave-in or whatnot, you know, which creates a big problem. So, after talking to these, this Insight Pipe Contracting, which they've done a lot of work for like the county and state and some other townships around, we decided to be our best bet both for, for the cost and the safety of it, to try to do this liner, you know, they're just relining the inside of the pipe.
So is it a safety issue that you're.
Yeah, yeah. Where the pipes are rotting, you know, over time, they're breaking apart. I think, you know, I'll have to get back with John, but I think they were steel culverts starting to rot, but I need to double check with John, but steel or if it was the concrete pulled apart, I can't remember which one that was. But yeah, this is.
There was, there was a, Mark, there was a whole session on this at the Winter Conference a couple of years back for the Township Association. And John was so excited to go. Do you remember this? John couldn't wait to go to the, because he wanted to know more about this, this technology. And it was kinda cute because he was like a little kid. He wanted to get in there and I was like, it doesn't sound fun, but okay.
It was with John. He was like, he was like a little kid in a candy store and he was thinking to this man. I thought the gentleman was saying this is sturdier than any pipe that you could put in and last water.
Yeah, I've heard nothing but good things about it. I've never personally, this is actually the first time I've seen it, but I've heard about it.
But you'd never have to buy John another Christmas present.
It'd be good to go with the, I mean, it's a great idea, really.
Well, let's pass that sucker around if you got it. Come on, let's see it.
That's what I brought it for.
Yeah, Cody, I want you to take out a stain on it.
That's what it feels like to me.
It's a spray-on type of application, right?
That's the way I understand it.
So it's a liner that's sprayed on the inside.
Yep. Yeah, they got the spray and they also have these liners that they somehow blow them through.
That are flexible, I guess, and then set up after their end.
But that's the spray-on.
All right, so I believe we have a motion and a second. So, I don't know if there's any additional discussion about this, but. Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Campbellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Cody, I think you're still low.
I am. I also request a motion to accept the proposal from Barrett Paving Materials in the amount of $118,230 for curb and gutter on the roadways included in the 2021 paving program.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I talked to John about this. I wanted a little bit more information on it earlier. Guess our original bid or budget was around 700,000 and then when the bids came in surprisingly under, under budget, they all were uniform in that they did not include this.
Yeah.
But they were all uniform. They did not include it. So.
Correct.
You know, we still got a deal, it sounds like.
Yes.
That would put us at about 80,000 below budget if I understood that correctly.
Exactly.
So, I think this is still, go ahead.
Yes, every company that's put a bid in missed that curb and gutter. So, but either way, that's why we were so low. But even after they put in the bids for the curb and gutter, we're still under the budget that we need to deal with.
Make the motion. Motion. Or you, I thought you made the motion.
Nick already made it.
Okay, Nick made it. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbellis.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Loretta, you're back up. Thank you, Cody. You did an excellent job. We will tell John that his services are no longer needed.
His daughter's playing in an All-Star game tonight.
Yeah, softball game. She got changed.
And here I am, broken arm. Loretta, go ahead.
I request a motion to approve the appointment of Kristen Cannon as a part-time planning and zoning assistant, not to exceed 29 hours per week at the rate of $16 per hour pending successful completion of all pre-employment requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Campbellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Okay, Loretta, you're still up.
On behalf of the Parks Committee, I request a motion to adopt the 2021 updates to the 2016 Parks Master Plan as recommended by the Parks Green Space Committee at their meeting held July the 7th, 2021.
Is there anything you guys wish to say about that before we take a vote?
I'm sorry, sir, again.
Anything you guys would like to add and discuss before we take this?
Doug's not here, but he did the majority of the work on that piece for compiling all the different pieces that, I submitted a small piece, Michelle submitted a small piece, and some other folks did too, but Doug ended up collating the whole thing and put it together. So, kudos to Doug. And we think it's pretty comprehensive. It includes the parks that we gained in the former village and, you know, so we're trying to look out, but notice a warm up. And so, I, my recommendation would be that you adopt it.
So, did he get the typos fixed?
Well, he sent all of you the revisions on July the 8th.
Did he get all the typos done?
I've not seen that since.
So, so when we had the joint meeting, I found like three typos. It was a big document. I found like three typos. So, they started making fun of me because I was like Mr., you know, Grandma. So, I went home and I told my wife that, you know, that I caught these three typos and they were calling me Mr. Grandma and she goes, "You?" "Yeah, I caught them. That's why it's important." She goes, "You have never known the word English in your entire life, so why are you starting now?" So, I apologize, but it is a good document. It does, it is inclusive of all of the parks in Pierce. And I think it's, it's good work. So, without any further ado, we have a motion.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbellis.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Okay, Loretta, go ahead.
Thank you. Finally, we had engaged a realtor to sell some of the vacant parcels that were jointly held between us from the former village of Amelia. And one of those is the one that was referred to as the Lori Lane Parcels. So, there's two parcels there. So, we request a motion for Resolution 2021-020 authorizing the sale of township real estate in McFarland subdivision of the former village of Amelia. So, the, the sale price is what was listed as the, the price at $75,000. And then we will have the Real Estate Commission in closing fees to come off of that and the intent is to close on Friday.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Is this the property that's across the street from the rivers?
Yes.
And that is only.
It's across from the car wash.
Yeah, kinda like where the, we spend all the money, flowers. And it's only valued with the value of real estate and homes being sold for $75,000?
It's a commercial property. We had it appraised and the sale price is higher than the appraisal.
And it was put out by a realtor, right?
Yes.
I mean, it was, you know, this is.
It's a real estate broker that managed it.
The market dictated the price.
Wow, because the market's up on everything else. And when they purchased that property, it was at $200,000.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Once again, caveat, it doesn't mean they, they bought it at the right price. That means they bought.
Or at the right time, because we actually have found that we have owned some parcels that we had bought at a higher price than they're valued at today.
I mean, I've been amazed by some of these parcels that the village took. Did they accept it?
Well, we, we are too, but it just amazes me for $75,000 on that area there where that can probably turn into like commercial or, well, discommercial, a business being put on that.
Well, it will.
They're buying it, they're getting profits too.
They will put a business on it. They will put a business on it. But did it, did they not have a building on it originally?
They used to be those whole brands.
Yeah, so it had a.
And when they tore it down, there was, there was a big sign that said. Yeah. And then they put flowers on it. But that's what, I mean, that's what it was praised at. That's what they sold it for. I mean, again, I'm not going to rule out that the gang with the village paid more than they should. I mean, I'm looking at, at what, three parcels? What is it, Sutton?
Oh, oh, those. Yes, there's something like five.
It's like, why, why did the village take them?
Not really usable.
We can, off on it, we can.
I mean, is that a rhetorical question or?
At the moment, yes.
So that includes the proper lot, what we call, where the.
Well, it's across the street from it on Lori Lane.
Because there was two parcels there.
There's two parcels right against each other. It's not where the car wash was built. It's across from that on the corner.
Right. So there was two, what we call proper lot is where the flower yard. And then a lot where the porches that were tore down. So, it's just a one lot?
No, it would, it, it's two parcels.
So we said it's that whole, okay.
Yeah.
It appears as one piece, but it's two.
Right, because, and again, this is, when we purchased that, or when that was going to be built on, the two units that are right behind us, the, of the Lori Lane apartments, I thought were purchased as well. They were, because they were going to tear that down, just the, the first two units. So, I didn't know if that was included because when we were discussing sale of that, they had gotten everybody out of those two buildings. Or we're starting to get people out of that.
It's .9 acre.
It's a pretty small lot.
That's why, yeah, that's why whoever was getting, it was some back room.
Yeah, they, they had a whole deal worked out. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We discussed it. Roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbellis.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Can I ask if maybe Debbie gets this passed around and signed out because Loretta wants to go to the closing on Friday? So she would like to have something.
I need to bring the resolution with me.
Do it an hour later, Debbie, whoever's going to speak.
Send it down. Cinderella.
I, you have three of them there, at least, I think, two. We have three fresh.
Okay, other business?
Something to bring up, I didn't briefly, just an update on Dr. Jordan. These folks are probably not very close to Dr. Jordan.
Which explains a lot.
Yes, it does. Plus, one of my neighbors contacted me a few weeks back with several concerns. And I attempted to call her back, but enough for messages, she never did return the call. As a artist, I thought I should update the group about what I was able to learn. I was in contact, she put me in contact with some folks at the EPA. I in turn was able to speak with a very nice gentleman in the area, very familiar and involved, very committed with, involved with the cleanup of Dr. Jordan. This is a gentleman at the EPA. So, a little bit of a history lesson I learned. I'll start with the stack. I'll try to breathe, but the stack that fell into the river, that was a topic of use and so forth a few months back. Evidently, when this facility was built, that was on dry land, well on dry land. And the river essentially moved to meet the tower and the plant. So, the river expanded over, over time. That was an interesting point to me. There are materials from that stack that did fall in the river. The Corps of Engineers, it has jurisdiction of the cleanup of that. And they are, you, they are supervising the cleanup contractor who is responsible for some of the materials that were removed from the river using underwater somewhere. It sounded like a pretty complex operation. And he was confident that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing, using the best technology that's available for them. I also had some concerns and questions about moving the transportation of ash from one pit to another. I gather from an online pit to a line pit and that, that's being done in, in open air. However, there are protocols in place to allow for moistening of the ash and roadways, the trucks and the like, to minimize the transfer of dust into the air. Apparently, I understood it very, I'm not sure if it was a year ago or if it was two years ago, but evidently there was a, what he called a fugitive plume. You know, that's new terminology to me. But evidently, there was a plume of dust that was expelled into the air a year or two years ago. The, as a result of that, the, this is the, speaking with a gentleman at the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency. As a result of that, they required the contractor create a cleanup plan, a detailed cleanup plan, which, which they did. And according to this gentleman, it was very costly and more detailed than any cleanup plan that he's seen to date. So, the cleanup plan did include remediation plan, the placement of cameras that are connected to telemetry, cellular technology, I suppose, that monitors the production of clouds or gases, particles in the air that in turn will alert the authorities so that they can act accordingly. It was this gentleman's understanding, the gentleman at the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency, that they are complying with the compliance plan and that what he expects and the agency expects out of the contractor is exactly what's being done. So, I, if anyone has any questions, I'll do the best I can to answer them, but that's what I was able to learn. Thank you.
Any question? All right. You know what I don't see on the agenda? Loretta, it's public comment. And after we have been taking public comment over long.
It was, it's right after other business, says public comment, open floor discussion.
That's right there. I found it. It's in big letters.
Look what's happened up here, Bonnie. No kicking. It's out of control.
It's Peter, man. That's gonna be a problem. We do have some, just real quick, we do have some items that are on the agenda for a executive session. I'm questioning whether the number, the second item needs to go to executive session or if we can have this discussion right now and move it up to other business. Consider a motion to entertain in the executive session. It's authorized by the hyper revised code 121.22G2 to consider the sale of unneeded real estate property pursuant to revised code, Section 505.10A6. I believe that's the discussion about the park property and Mr. Homan's proposal. And I know, from my perspective, I'm not sure that we have enough data to actually make a decision on that. And I think you and I talked about this, about getting an appraisal to see what that price is. And so, I'm not prepared to actually do any kind of a real estate decision on that.
Whether.
Until I get that.
What we don't know is, yes, whether we do or don't want to entertain his proposal. But if we want more information regardless, it's about $500 for an appraisal and I could pursue that if you agree to do that. I mean, if that's what you'd like me to do.
The other option is to just vote down. So, again, the other option, because I just said it kind of under my breath, but I just want to ensure that it's clear. The other option is we just vote down. We're not interested in hearing anything more or doing anything more. So, I just don't know that we need to go into.
Right. If there was a counter-proposed negotiation, that would be appropriate for executive session.
I see two options. We either ask for the appraisal, which is an action we can do right here, right now. Or we vote it down, which is an action we can do right here, right now, without going into executive session.
Absolutely.
For that item.
I'm personally really not really interested in selling any of the park land.
I, I agree. I don't want to spend money on an appraisal and I don't think it's going to change my decision.
I mean, that's fair. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to reject the offer made by Mr. Homan for the purchase of. for the purchase of one acre of park land. She's writing it down inside. Wait till she's done. Do we have any discussion? Did you got it? Do we have any discussion? Hearing that, roll call, boys.
Okay, Mr. Kempellis?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman?
Yes. We're going to have to take that one.
Plain and simple. Cross it off the list.
He wanted to point out that that's twice tonight, that we made a motion and voted on doing nothing.
We are a board of action.
This is a little bit more than doing nothing, we're rejecting the offer. Okay, so we don't have to do that in the executive session, but let's do the public comment and open floor discussion at this point.
I have one thing to ask.
Come on up. Yes, ma'am?
I'm a little bit sorry and bringing myself to the public, but I've been concerned, yeah, my census, I have to say that.
Could you tell us your name and...
Marion Blakey.
Where you live?
Riverdale. And on my census form, when I sent, everybody got standing right out with it. There was nothing in here that I thought, that I felt, gave me the opportunity to say I don't live in an incorporated area, and that I'm concerned about the division of the money that's coming from Washington. How do those people know this, this money, this house belongs in Pierce Township? That's my question. And that's up to you to decide, you figure it out. It concerns me that it can be a considerable amount of money when you're looking at money coming from Washington into a township. So, there it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't really recall how, I did it online, but I don't remember if I asked if I lived in Pierce.
Doesn't ask anything.
I don't remember that.
That's it, and that zip code now is Davie Township and Pierce Township. And no longer, no longer is incorporated here.
That's a good point. We'll look into it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? Michelle?
Michelle, I was like there too, I think. You want to talk about ice cream?
Yeah. Do we want to have ice cream at our meeting on the 22nd, guys?
Duh.
Come on, man, do we want ice cream?
We thought about that, and it was like, do we want people coming for ice cream, or do we want people coming to talk about the park?
You bring them in for the former and hope they stay for the latter.
I bet. Let's put it this way, it's not like we're bringing beers, so it's not like... What do you guys think, come on?
Since we also had an initial discussion about having food trucks, for, you know, like the, it'll come to become an ice.
Yeah.
And it gets more likely exposed to tomorrow, maybe.
We've got, well, we've got an inside track on this one, she's, she can cut us a deal, man.
I think it'd be a good, like, the food trucks are hesitant if they don't think they got a big enough crowd to make money, essentially. So you might not get food trucks plural, you might be lucky if you get one. Something like this might be something smaller that would be worth, if everybody could win on something like that.
And we can make it fun, you know, ice cream, you know.
Sprinkles.
Do you have a estimated cost?
How much is it?
Okay, that does...
Perhaps we should ask in American dollars, how much is it? Well, we just saved money on not doing the appraisal.
That was...
That would have been 500, yeah.
We're $5 up still.
We're $5 up. I, I, I think we should do it, I think it'd be fun, add a component, bring people. I mean, Mark, you were talking about that, one of our previous meetings, about having ice cream.
I always talk about food, you know, so, bourbon.
What flavors?
Yeah, we can have bourbon, man.
I saw, you know, if we could get the Houston Halo truck. The donut with the scoop of ice cream in the middle, we could get that to come along.
Now, if you go to Grater's, they actually have bourbon ice cream. So you'd have the best of both worlds there, if you could put a donut around that. All right, do we need a motion for that, or do we just direct Loretta?
Well, it's unusual, we don't always, so, I mean...
Let's do it.
Is it going to come out of the parks budget?
I'll make the motion for ice cream.
It wouldn't hurt.
Motion for ice cream.
That you engage an ice cream truck for the meeting on the 22nd.
Do we have any other discussion about ice cream?
Okay, flavor of chocolate, strawberry, and...
Is it soft?
When was that coming out?
We'll take it out.
General, general, general.
We have, we need an ice cream, fine, yeah, we'll take it out in general.
Second, we didn't see anything about all the green on the agenda tonight. What do you stand with that?
Well, we're still working on that, on the green. Gary?
I don't have any more update than what the prosecutor's been, I mean, it's an ongoing thing. It's just ongoing.
Tom has an update.
Just, I know it's a very small update, it doesn't necessarily concern us, but I've been told that there is a very, very serious buyer who's been there for over a month and a half trying to buy a place, and they didn't know about all the horrible things that have happened there. So now they're digging it further in their diligence. But what I told them is, they should be coming here and talking to you about what you want and what you can do for them to help pull this trigger, bad expression, to make it happen, so that any kind of economic incentive that the township can afford can be discussed. And I think they're mainly dealing with the county, because the county is a party to the lawsuit. So what I was saying to them is, talk to us too, because if we're happy, the county will promptly be happy. So that's just an infancy now, and now we're just opening the lines of communication.
I just have always seen it on the agenda.
Well, we just, we just didn't put it on...
It's kind of an withholding.
Yeah, because there's some hearings that are going on on the county level. Gary's not here tonight, Gary Offer had gone over, now, Chief, do you, do you have an update on...
Yeah, there was some serious hazard orders that were drafted due to conditions of stairwells. They did do additional inspection and provide those orders to them. There were a number of commits that were taken out of the building department, and a number of repairs were made. Since that timeframe, Gary hasn't been back over there with the engineer that was involved in the previous inspection to do the remainder of the complex, but they said it would be a little bit of time before we got any kind of full background.
So, yeah, remember the last time we met, we passed a motion directing Gary and the Chief to go in and inspect the rest of the building, have the, have our engineering firm go in and look at the other buildings, we just haven't gotten that back yet. So we're kind of in between at this point, but we still do have, one building is shut down. The one with the foundation issue is still shut down. Is the second, is, because we had one whole building shut down, and we had second floor that were both evacuated, and I think the second floor is back, they're, they're back in their apartments after some...
Well, those affected by the stairwells, the stairwells were repaired and inspected by the county, but the one that has the structural problems with the basement below it, that one is still vacant, as far as I know.
If I'm not mistaken, and I don't want to go too far off the path, but as I recall, we also made a motion at that meeting that we wanted our engineer to take a look at whatever report their engineer came back with, and as I understand it, their engineer came back on building 306, that there's no way they can get anybody back in there. So at that point, we didn't need our engineer to go review their work. Their work was pretty much what we expected, so, that's kind of where we stand, so that's why we didn't put it on the agenda.
The last thing I just wanted to say, Eddie, for doing his survey of the Will Creek Apartments, they are, as we talked at the show apart, they're sketchy, that's probably what he likes to do. So I appreciate any update. His continued presence and pressure on them to retain a livable atmosphere of good news people at any additional, please press him, I appreciate that.
So we've, beyond just that, there were several, several items that were brought to our attention that needed to be fixed and corroborated. Chief among them was a pile of mailboxes that were laying on the ground that had been that way since April. Eddie Berg held that all the way through, working with the, apparently in March or April...
The postal service, too.
Yeah, in March or April, a work order had been issued by the postal service and not executed, and here we were in June when this happened. Eddie worked through the postal service and was able to get them put up in, what was it, about two weeks?
I think so.
So the mailboxes are back up and functioning.
One of my detailers lives back in there, so when I saw that picture, I went running out of my office and I'm like, here are the boxes right there. Great, thanks.
There was a tree that was down for months, trees and... Eddie has done some inspections on some things in the parking lot that need to be pointed out.
The garbage collection.
He's organized, I think between you, Loretta, and Eddie, you organized some meetings with, with Rumkey to handle some of the garbage can issues, because some of the garbage cans, they were using individual cans, and those cans were being thrown around the parking lot. So dumpsters, I think, are going to be installed, so we won't have that issue moving forward. And also, Gary Offer did a, and the fire department have done a walk around to look for other violations for hazards on the living conditions in the structures. So, so they've done that, and I don't think they've found anything from that.
Most of that complex doesn't have any common use area, like on the green, for example, the shared stairwell, and there's not a whole lot that we can do under fire. They did walk around them, and evidently, they're a complex that has some safety records.
I appreciate that, that pressure.
Yeah, so we've, we've gone at it pretty forward.
And once rest of the set, you know, on the green, I think it'll make us have a lot more, it would make us have a lot more time for the light show.
Anyone?
You don't have to.
I'm laughing up because I heard that stuff on there, so I'm ashamed, but I didn't hear it.
The mic will pick you up.
So in March, there was a discussion, Alan, that you brought up about possibly doing the renewal of the trash landing in November, and then, still on the night, the lines of rumkey, that they, Loretta, we said something about maybe counting the dumpsters, and that the multifamily units would be evaluated as to what the cost for rumkey is in there. Is there any, have you decided we're going to put the, on the ballot in November?
Well...
Doesn't that have to be decided a while ago?
Well, since we haven't brought it up, it doesn't look like we're going. So we've, we've spent a lot of time going through the, through that account and trying to make sure that everything is functioning. We did look at the, Loretta, I don't know if it's for you, but we did look at that issue about the dumpsters and the multi-families, that is included in the current contract.
Which doesn't expire until May.
Yeah, so if we were going to change that, we'd have to change it at the end of the contract, rather than just rip it out right now. So that's still something that we may negotiate out in the new contract. But we've also been, you know, watching the account pretty regularly, and we're, it's close, it'll be tight, but it looks like we'll be able to get through until the end, and we'll have, it's up for renewal, what, in May of '22? So, right now, as the account sits, it looks like we'll be able to make it to May.
We may have to transfer funds if necessary, that's what we'll have to do.
So, but right now, it wouldn't be a huge transfer, that, that transfer wouldn't be a large amount of money, and it would get us through if we needed to. So, yeah, we, we keep meeting on the subject and watching it every month as, as revenue is coming in. So, we should be okay right now.
And the other question, yeah, the other question was about the meeting that was supposed to be tomorrow. There's nothing up right now, I can't have a meeting tomorrow because there's been no posting. Have they called to ask...
Don't rule it out. Don't rule it out, they've, they've done that before.
Well, they'll do this a lot longer, you know, I'll be the next one making the lawsuit.
Let's get it done.
Have they called anybody to ask to use a building? Because the only one that they can use is the old police station, because it's the only one that they qualify.
Well, they could use any other public space, they could use our space or Batavia Township's space, they, you know, they could use another, another space, as long as they notice where they're meeting.
So I think the answer to your question is no, they have not contacted.
But I doubt that that's where they would plan to meet. I, I would imagine they'll use one of the facilities that's well-prepared now.
Okay. Anybody else?
Real quick, I think about some emails back in February, the trustees, and Loretta, and I've not received anything, Alan, we didn't respond, I appreciate that. But Nick, even, it was back February 14th, we talked about it, and also, he, what was the... He asked me to reset it, and I did, and I've not received anything. I just, it's just the opinion of, you know, where the village starts shutting down, I just have some thoughts here.
Okay.
Be surprised if, you know...
Yeah, I'll, I'll dig, I'll dig that out.
It's not even, and I'll reset it.
Okay. Feel free to reset it to me, because based on, you know, if you sent it in February, did I give you an answer?
Yeah.
Facts in the ground, we have changed.
Right. And also, it was, I resented the, in March, March, March 10th.
Okay, I'll, I'll look around that time, I'll see what I, sorry about that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I just wanted to talk to you.
I probably read it, but yeah, I'm sorry I didn't respond, I'll look for it.
Just know that if you reset it to me, if I don't ever need it, I'm not going to answer.
Yeah, sorry. And Loretta, I have one also pending, preparatory, if I send you.
Yeah, I will have to discuss it together, I think, and see.
Yeah, because it's just, you know, I know of you, but I think that's where we're at right now with this.
Thanks. All right, Tim, you too, ma'am.
I'm trying to save you too long, I haven't been here for a while, at least someone that has heard next meeting, but your mom's talking for mine.
It's not as long as I normally would.
So, just back to what we were talking about, the rumkey situation, and it sounds like we're, that we might make the budget, might have to transfer added. Is that kind of a factor, because you had us now take over the former building for a million?
In part, yeah, it just means that our, the funds that we have have to be stretched a little bit.
Okay, and then, this question might be for Loretta, since she knows mostly about the rumkey stuff. So when you have new subdivisions that become built in Pierce Township, so of course, those houses aren't budgeted into the actual bill. Is those residents being billed through rumkey for our, our year?
Yeah, but the Pierce's...
And then, you guys add them into your bill?
They're part of the fund balance that already existed to cover waste in this community.
So you're saying any new subdivision coming in will immediately have rumkey?
When the unit's occupied there.
Being paid by Pierce Township, not the individual households?
From the fund balance that's collected, prior to them coming. From the fund balance that's collected prior to them coming.
Okay.
But they will be paying into the future.
Okay. So with that being said, why did the former village, a million people, have to pay a year's worth of individual billing for Rumkey? And a newer subdivision coming in, which you don't have the money for them because those are new households, you've already had your levy out there and they're getting swooped in with that extra payment?
They pay their taxes immediately. It's part of their tax bill as soon as they pay their first tax bill at the home they live in.
It's in the years.
Well, yeah, but true, but you, I mean, they're paying immediately. They're not getting a year where their tax payments are going into the Amelia thing. And I get your point with the amount of money that we're going to get when the dissolve is official and that's all, we have to discuss that and talk about that for sure. I mean, but I think that's what that rolls into more than this. Sorry, Sue, I just started talking.
So and then just without, it means that it's stated in some meeting or something that Loretta said all Pierce neighbors, people living in Pierce, it's services from Rum, from you guys were entitled to it all, but then we didn't get that. We had to pay a year's worth. That's just a little mind boggling to me. It's no different than having a new subdivision built versus a subdivision that you now had to take on newly.
Well, so I appreciate your thought process. Let me think about this. So halfway, your guys' tax bill that you paid six months into 2020 was paid to the village still. The tax bill that somebody else was here that moved in the beginning of last year, same time, paid their tax bill to us six months in, including that Rumkey portion of the bill. So your money was going over here for a year and that's what we have to decide what we want to do with that money. I mean, I agree with, I'm agreeing with you in kind of.
I get what you're saying, but I don't because what she has said, if you become a Pierce Township resident, every, we have to honor everything to everyone. So if you'd like, you guys honored the fire and the police, we did not honor the Rumkey, the trash, trash services. That's all I'm just saying. And then our tax money that went into that, I didn't want to get into all this windfall because we all know there's a windfall. You guys are going to get that plus. We all know that. I'm just, it doesn't make sense because it'd be like you did. We're a whole new big subdivision. That's just how I feel. And then when you said something about the COVID relief fund money and you guys spent $60,000 and you made it like it's towards a million.
It was on a business study. It was.
Yeah, but you made it sound like, well, we're spending money on you guys. Like I look at it, we're all one.
We are one.
Some people are still referring to it as we're not.
I don't.
And it's.
But I will clarify one thing about that. Point was, and it was in direct, it was a conversation about investing in Amelia. I think it was in response to Tim's comments about.
But it's not how, it's how she said it. It's how she said it. Now I was pursuing.
No, I said we would get a business, we invested the COVID funds to the business district up there. Did you have a business study done?
And so the way I took it, and I apologize if it's taken the wrong way, but the way I take this is that we are making a commitment.
We are.
Well, she started us a little.
The little what?
Starting line.
Well, no, Debbie's defense really, I mean, I've said some things that were misconstrued that even way like about the violence side of that. I don't know how that was interpretive, but it went out the wrong way maybe. But I can, in order, I wouldn't think of her Debbie, I don't think she meant it any other way.
And I was thinking it when I said it.
We want to, it's important to all of us that that area be developed. And regardless of where the money came from, we felt it was important, even before I came on the board, I actually attended one of those meetings and voiced my support of this study because I thought it was so important that the township confessed on that part of the township, regardless of where the money came from. So true, it did come from covered money, but still, you know, our goal, the best goal for all of us was to spend it there, you know?
But the thing is, you got to look at it this way. How, you got to watch how you say it.
Well.
Because people can perceive a difference. So sometimes you got to sit back and think about how I'm saying, using my tone of voice. And that's kind of, I took it as a detail.
I was looking at Alan even when I was saying it.
I'm just kind of saying.
Those mistakes.
But I would like to ask, so how much COVID fund money did Pierce Township get?
We got.
$434,000.
It was 60 for that though, right?
Right.
Yeah, it was all told, we had three tranches of money coming from CARES Act. We received 30,000, these are just, I could be wrong in a lot of ways. I think the first shot was about 30,000. We got a second shot for about 40,000, 50,000. And then the third CARES Act is like 434,000.
And then have we spent all that? Do we still have that?
We had to. We, and it was all appropriated and with purchase orders, yes.
And so you can find the writers' post then to see where all that money is what?
But I will tell you this, that the way we looked at using the COVID funds, we used it to try to address needs that we would have coming out of the general fund. So if we were receiving 434,000, we looked at the rules and how it works. So that we could take relief, we could relieve some of our siloed funds, like for instance, the police department, the fire department.
They all use those funds.
And so we could use it for staff time, staff overtime for equipment, you know, and we use that.
We were allowed to be stuck for salaries or like.
It had to be used on certain things.
We used it for this AD system.
But yeah, you can have the public records or I don't think we were, we used to also use it on a building over there, didn't we?
And so what we did was, because we used it for some of those priorities, we were able to extend our budgets. So that's why we were able to do some things, extend out some of the levies that we have. By using those funds, we're able to get another year out of a levy. So we don't have to go back and ask you for an increase or a renewal. So that's what our strategy was. And so when you see that, that's what the strategy that we put into. And that's what we're going to do with the ARP funds. They're a little stranger, the way you.
It's our federal funds.
Well, the CARES are feds too.
Yeah, but anchored to state.
They were, the way they set up the ARP funds are much more restrictive than the CARES Act, but the early CARES, they were restrictive too. And I think you see this, you know, this shift over time. That's what we try to prioritize.
But I understand, I just kind of want to see where everything, kind of like too, because it's just.
And we have, and we have to do a quarterly report to the county on, because it has to all balance and we send, do that every quarter.
Okay, but just my little thing, just ending up what I'm going to say about Rumkey. I just don't, I still want to agree with that because it's no different than like a new subdivision being built. I'm just saying.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Because we do have to get into the executive session. I don't know if we're going to take action in the executive session, so I don't know if we are or we won't.
I believe we may.
When we come out of the executive session.
Sure won't be taking.
So I just want you to, you know, if there's a chance we might take action when we come back in here, so you're welcome to stay until we, till we come back out. I don't think that's going to happen, but.
I think we may. I think we may need to bring some public information back.
On the third item, let's just want to make official action. That said, let me read the votes here. On the first issue, consider a motion to enter executive session as authorized by revised code, section 121, dot 22, G1, to discuss the retirement and replacement of chief of police. And I agree, but we have to, so do we need to do these as individual motions or can we just?
I think individual.
Okay, can I have a motion to go into executive session for item one?
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion in the second, go into executive session, roll call this.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Yes. On the third item, consider a motion to enter into executive session as authorized by revised code, section 121, point 22, G1, to consider the investigation or charges against the township employee. Can I have a motion for that?
Taken.
Motion in the second, roll call this.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
And Debbie may let the minutes reflect that there is a chance that that will result in some official action, there's a chance.
So that said, we will retreat to the back room and then we will come back out. Mr. Kaden?
I need you for this.
Debbie, you're ready, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to get this not be universal here, Jack. Okay, we are back in regular session. Do you need to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like a motion to re-enter regular session. Do we have a motion?
So move.
So I have a motion second. Roll call, please, Debbie.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Caballos.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. All right, so two items that we discussed. Do I just do a report on the item number one?
No.
Okay, because we need to take action.
Okay.
Okay, so we didn't, there was no action taken on item one.
So, oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you, Nick. So no action taken on item one. So we move to item two. Loretta, you have a motion.
The public elect to request a motion to direct the fire chief to repair a report and recommendation to the exonerative complaint and investigation of the assistant fire chief.
I will make the motion.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion in the matter? Hearing non, let's do roll call, Debbie.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Caballos. And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. All right. If there's no further business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we really want to discuss this? Roll call, please.
Mr. Caballos.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you for your hardy souls that stuck around.